It's Thursday, December tenth, two thousand and twenty. Welcome to Woodstock City Council. This meeting is being held electronically in accordance with section two thirty eight subsection three point three of the municipal act. And section sixteen point six point two four of the city of Woodstock procedural by law. This meeting is being live streamed to the city's YouTube channel. And a recording of this meeting will also be posted on the city's website following the meeting. An agenda of the meeting can be found on the agendas, meetings and minutes page of the city's website. Councillors will be raising their hands in view of their webcam when moving a motion, requesting to speak, and when a vote is being taken. If a member of council is disconnected or having technical difficulties, we will take a recess in order to attempt to rectify the issue. If technical difficulties exist that prevent the meeting from continuing, the meeting will be adjourned and reconvened at a later time. If a councillor needs to leave the meeting at any time, they're requested to inform the clerk. Welcome, and I'll now ask all of the councillors to turn on their webcam. Any disclosure of conflict of interest? Councillor Schattenberg?
Yeah, date of the meeting, December tenth, two thousand and twenty. I councillor Mark Schattenberg declare a potential conflict of interest on agenda item number F two. So it's under the clerks department section, the subject matter, safety standard certificate for taxi licensing. Councillor named here and myself is employed part time in the taxi industry.
Thank you. Any other conflicts of interest? Seeing none? Disclosure of new business? Matters arising from the minutes? Okay, so we have the minutes from the November nineteenth regular meeting, as well as the November four twenty fourth capital budget meeting. Councillor Accioni?
Thank you, your worship. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Lauder, that the minutes of the regular meeting of Woodstock City Council held on November nineteen, two thousand and twenty, and the minutes of the special capital budget meeting held on November twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty be adopted.
Thank you. Any errors or omissions? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries unanimously. And then we have additions to the agenda. I'd like a mover for the additions. Councillor Talbot?
Thank you, worship. I'll move the following items be added to the agenda. Correspondence item nine E B I A carryover request. And department report F three minor variance number M V twenty six twenty four ninety nine Crestwood Court.
Thank you, and seconded by councillor Accioni. Discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries unanimous. And that brings us to presentations. And today we have some special guests with us. We have Kathleen Devine. She is the senior manager for the community recognition program for O L G. And we also have pastor Renee McIntyre from Trumpet of Truth Church, representing the Refuge, as well as Tim Smith from Cycles for Life Transitional Housing. And we have a very hardworking committee here in the community, of course. Our partners at O L G, combined with Gateway Casino, each year, part of the proceeds from the slot revenue are reinvested directly here in the community with our community partner organizations. So we have volunteer members of the community at two different intakes, review the applications from our partners, and make decisions on how to hand out those funds. And this right now is one of those items where if we weren't in COVID, we'd be doing it live in council chambers and we'd have an extremely large check presentation. We've kind of condensed it. It's more of a medium sized check presentation today. But what I would like to do, maybe before we do this, I will ask Kathleen Devine if she has any words for council. Welcome.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Mayor Birch, it's a pleasure to be here. I just, you know, I think what your city is doing with to help make life in the community better is incredible. And and these local organizations get to receive, you know, through your community grants program is just a, it's a wonderful demonstration of how Woodstock is investing resources to benefit the people that live and work there. So we're thrilled to be a part of this, and and I look forward to seeing you all in person, maybe next year.
Here's hoping. Thank you very much. And maybe we'll start with pastor Renee McIntyre. If you want to tell us a bit about all the hard work you've been doing at the Refuge with your team of volunteers and let the community know how you're making a difference and an impact in our downtown. Welcome.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Yeah, so we are have been so just grateful to be able to receive that donation, and it's gone to really great use. We feed the homeless and the drug addicted kind of members of our community that are really struggling right now. We serve them a hot breakfast and a hot lunch five days a week. And we offer laundry services and just friendship and community and family and a place to be accepted. It's a lot of work. We have a really large team of volunteers and one part time employer, employee, sorry. But yeah, it's a lot of work, but we really love it, and a lot of people are being helped and a lot of people are being fed. So we're really grateful.
Thank you for that. And that means next up, Tim Smith from Cycles for Life. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you for having me. Having video problems. Yeah, I'd like to thank the city and the O L G for everything that they've done. The committed commitment to help what we're how the people were helping is is massive. We help the people at the lowest rungs of the ladder in the city. And the city keeps stepping up and helping us do that for them. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And I I know it's a lot to ask for people at the spur of the moment to publicly speak. I think one thing, just to make sure everyone at home understands, between these two groups, the Refuge and Cycles for Life, we in fact have seven days a week coverage and resources available for some of the most vulnerable in our community. And it's nice to see the two organizations coordinating and working so closely together. And again, I'll I'll hold this up. So let's see, are we getting it all in? So this is the official check from O L G and the Woodstock Community Grants. And we have both named recipients here, the Trumpet of Truth, the Refuge, and Cycles of Life for supportive transitional living. And on behalf of the committee and on behalf of all of the citizens of Woodstock and city council, I want to thank both of your teams for all that you're doing. And also, again, a big thank you through to Kathleen Devine. Without O L G and its long term commitment here in the community, there's a a lot of good work that would be left undone. So we thank you for the efforts. And I know it's been a difficult year for the gaming industry with the closures and the limits in place. And a lot of our our groups that would normally apply, they 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 had the same type of issue. So our our committee was very thoughtful in how they handed out the funds this year. Of course, our Treasury Department is always very good at making sure that we're not counting our our chickens before they're hatched. So we do have some money in the bank, hoping that next year will be a better year for everybody. So again, on behalf of Woodstock City Council, thank you for your ongoing commitment to our community.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And next up, we'll go to consideration of planning reports, and we have an application for zone change at eleven sixty two Parkinson Road. And looking for a motion on that one, councillor Accioni?
Yeah, moved by myself. The Woodstock City Council have proven principle, the application for lands described as part block one forty and forty one M dash two zero six, parts three to six forty one R dash seven seven two eight in the city of Woodstock to rezone a southerly portion of the lot to be severed by B nineteen dash ninety five dash eight from Special General Industrial Zone M three one to Special General Industrial Zone M three twenty two to eliminate the split zoning of the lot. And further, that any comments received from the public were reviewed and considered before the decision was made in relation to this planning matter.
Thank you. And a seconder? And we'll go with councillor Schattenberg. And Ms. Hasler, welcome.
Thank you. So I'll just share my screen here. So the first application for zone change is for as councillor Accioni pointed out, it's for eleven sixty two Parkinson Road. And basically, the application for zone change is to is to satisfy a condition of a related application for consent. And that application for consent was approved by the Land Division Committee on November fifth of this year. And the applicant is simply looking to rezone the southerly portion of the subject lands to eliminate the split zoning. The current use on the subject lands is a repair garage, a service garage for commercial vehicles. And that use will continue. No further development is being proposed for this site. The applicant is just simply looking to to extend the zoning for consistency purposes. Staff reviewed the application. We're supportive of of the application. It's consistent with the requested, sorry, with the proposed zoning. It's in keeping with the provincial policy statement as it's promoting economic development. And it's also in keeping with the official plan policies as it is a use that's contemplated by the Commerce Way Business Park policies. And as I indicated, it's also in keeping with the zoning. So of that, we would recommend that this application be given favorable consideration. We're recommending that it be approved in principle, and we will bring an amending bylaw once the applicant has provided us with a reference plan by way of the consent application. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions of council? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries unanimous. And our next planning application is the application for consent and easement for true built construction for five eighty five Adelaide Street. Looking for a mover and a seconder on this one. We'll go councillor Lauder.
Thank you. I'm with that Woodstock City Council advised the Land Division Committee that the city supports the consent and easement on the subject property, subject to the following ten conditions.
Thank you. And a seconder, councillor Tate, and Ms. Hasler? Welcome again.
Thank you. This application for severance, council may recall, there was a zone change that council approved back in June for the subject lands. And basically, the lands were rezoned to facilitate the proposed townhouse development. And so what the applicant is proposing is to create three townhouse use or three townhouse units on the subject property have a the proposed site plan set up there. And so at this point in time, the applicant's proposing to sever the parcels. The foundations are not in the ground at this point in time, and that's why council is seeing this application before you today because it's basically the creation of vacant lots. So the applicant's proposing to sever two lots, retain the third lot. And then also, the applicant is proposing to create an access easement along the westerly portion of the most western property. And the easement will run north and south, and then also east and west to the interior lot so that the owners of the interior parcel can access their rear yard for maintenance purposes and and whatever other purposes may be required. The could or sorry, the easement is approximately one point five meters in width. The application was circulated to a number of agencies. It was also reviewed previously through the zone change application, and at this point in time, the applicant is also undergoing the site plan approval process to in order to get a building permit to construct these these units. So staff are satisfied with the the proposed townhouses. They're in keeping with the zoning, the zoning. The proposal is in keeping with the official plan as it's promoting a different form of housing in in a residential area. It's maintaining the character of the area as well. We talked a little bit on Monday night about parking. If council recalls, the applicant is proposing that each unit has a garage as well as a driveway. So there's there's ample parking being provided on the site that was covered through the previous zone change, but I just wanted to to remind council of that because that did come up. In light of that, we would recommend that this application be given favorable consideration by council.
Thank you. Questions of council? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries unanimous. And our next one is the application for zone change at eight fifty Parkinson Road for Star Bank Developments. Councillor Fraser, seconded by councillor Schattenberg.
Thank you. That Woodstock City Council approved the application for lands described as part lot eighteen concession to East Oxford, parts five to ten forty one R dash eight seven oh seven in the city of Woodstock to rezone the southerly portion of the subject property from General Industrial Zone M three to amended Special Regional Commercial Zone C six dash four to facilitate the development of a nondepartamental store D S T M used comprising approximately of nineteen hundred and fifty square meters. And further, that any comments received from the public were reviewed and considered before the decision was made in relation to this matter.
Thank you. Ms. Hasler?
Thank you. So this next application, we did go into a significant amount of detail with respect to the square footage on Monday night. So I'm not going to go into that amount of detail. However, if council has follow up questions for with with more specifics to the square footage, I'm happy to go over them again. Generally, the application for zone change is seeking to extend the zoning, the C six dash four zoning onto the lands directly east of the subject property. So for for just for a point of reference, the C six dash four zone currently houses the No Frills Plaza. And so the applicant is proposing to construct a twenty one thousand square foot commercial building behind the the No Frills Building. The parcels, oh, sorry, and I should say, and then to the north, that's still the same parcel, the applicants proposing to construct an industrial plaza on those lands. Currently, these lands have a split zoning. They're zoned M two in the north and then M three in the south. And then so just just the lands that are zoned M three, these this hatched area would be rezoned to C six dash four. The industrial plaza is in keeping with the M two zoning. And so that's not a part of the the actual application before council tonight or sorry, this afternoon. So the a number of years ago, council may recall, the there was an official plan amendment and a zone change for this area that allowed developments to go beyond the maximum twenty thousand or twenty one thousand square feet. Sorry, it's twenty thousand square feet for commercial development. And so at this point, the applicant is just is just required to apply for a zone change to allow the C six dash four to to be extended. In addition to that, with respect to the C six dash four zone, the applicant is requesting to increase the overall total gross floor area for the for the zone as well as to increase the gross floor area permitted for a nondepartment store D S T M uses. And that would be to allow the twenty one thousand square foot commercial building. In support of the application, the applicant provided a market or a sort of retail market impact analysis, which is a requirement of the official plan when they they go to increase the square footage in the regional commercial node. So as as council may recall, on Monday night, we we talked a little bit about that study. And basically, what was determined through the study is that there is a current shortage of square footage for regional commercial node type uses. So those large formats, commercial developments. And more importantly, there is there is a shortage of over five hundred thousand square feet for or sorry, there's an estimated requirement for over five that five hundred thousand square feet for the nondepartment store D S T M retail uses. And then I should I should also point out that within the C six dash four zone and the regional commercial designation in general, we do not allow uses, retail uses that are below the three hundred and twenty five square meters. And that's just basically to ensure that we don't have, we're not permitting retail uses that would be in direct competition with retail type uses in the downtown. So further to to the market impact analysis, the the study also indicated that they didn't feel that the proposed twenty one thousand square foot commercial development would be in competition with uses in the downtown. Also, a development of this size could not be accommodated in the downtown. And so they felt that this site was quite appropriate for the proposed use. In light of that, we 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 circulated the application. Staff were generally supportive of the application. There was a traffic impact study that was also done, and it was indicated that no upgrades were required to any of the the roads or traffic calming measures in the area. And we generally feel that the application is in keeping with the provincial policy statement as it promotes economic development. It will not have a negative impact on the viability or the vitality of the downtown. It's in keeping with the regional commercial known policies in the county official plan. And the application is also in keeping with with the proposed zoning being the C six dash four. And in light of that, we'd recommend that this application be approved by council.
Thank you. Questions of council? Councillor Schattenberg?
Yeah, through the mayor to to end, Ray Hackle, I guess one question is more of an open ended thing that you I know he can answer based on results of our meeting on Monday, since we had a planner from Zalinko Primo in London, visiting us on Mondays of meeting. At this point in time, because people always want to know what's planned for the area, there are no specific uses, specific stores, specific retail outlets that are that are earmarked for this property, is there? I mean, people always want to are always curious about that question.
Through the mayor to councillor Schattenberg's question, we did follow up with the applicant to to ask if they had a specific use in mind because that's generally something that council and the public are interested to know. At this point in time, they do not have a tenant lined up. Basically, the the zone change would allow for flexibility in 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 attracting a tenant to the site.
Thank you. Further questions of council? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries unanimous. And our last planning application is a draft plan of condominium and exemption from draft and approval for two sixty nine Piddock Park Road. Councillor Talbot?
Thank you, worship. I'm moved that Woodstock City Council advised county council that the city supports the application for draft approval of a proposed condominium submitted by six three four five two four Ontario Inc., file number C D eighteen oh two eight, prepared by Brooks and Muir Surveying dated September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty, for lands described as part lot five concession thirteen east Zora, being parts one and two, R P forty one R ninety five thirty seven city of Woodstock. And further, that Woodstock City Council advised county council that the city supports the application for exemption from the draft plan of condominium approval process submitted by six three four five two four Ontario Inc., file number C D eighteen oh two eight, prepared by Brooks and Muir Surveying dated September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty, for lands described as part lot five concession thirteenth east Zora, being parts one and two, R P forty one R ninety five thirty seven city of Woodstock. As all matters relating to the development have been addressed through the site plan approval process, and a site plan agreement has been registered with the city of Woodstock.
Thank you. And a seconder? We'll councillor Tate, Ms. Hasler?
Thank you. This final application is an application for draft plan of condominium and and also condominium exemption. And the applicant is proposing basically to make, just just for council's references, is on Piddock Park Road. And then I'll just scroll down to the the condo plan. And so the applicant is proposing eleven town or sorry, eleven semi detached dwellings, which would be twenty two semi detached dwelling units. And what the applicant is proposing is to is for the vacant land condominium to make the units and the surrounding rear and front yard to be separately conveyable. And so the applicant can go forward and sell each unit as part of the condominium plan, and they would be separately conveyable. And then the the common elements would be the access as well as the interior road. Sorry, and then also that would include visitor parking as well, and those would all be held in common ownership. So as council may recall, there was an official plan amendment in a zone change done on the subject property to permit this this form of development, and that was granted back in two thousand and seventeen. And then the applicant also went through site plan approval, which was also granted in two thousand and nineteen. And so at this point, we found that it would be appropriate to for the applicant to apply for the exemption, as it's already been through a couple of public processes. And then it's also been through the site plan approval process. And so any sort of conditions that would have been applied through a plan of condominium have already been addressed through the approved site plan site plan, as well as have been addressed in the site plan agreement that has been registered on title. Sorry, the subject lands are designated low density. The proposal and our opinion is in keeping with the provincial policy statement in the official plan as it's providing an alternative form of housing. And the proposal, as as it's already been through the zoning, as well as the site plan approval process, it's also in keeping with with the existing zoning on the subject lands. And so in light of that, we recommend that city council give county council a positive recommendation on this application.
Thank you. Questions of council? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries unanimous. And next up on our agenda is the purchasing bylaw revisions. Councillor Accioni? Oh, whoops, I flipped the page too soon, sorry. Next up on the agenda is our correspondence, and we have the request for the Boden name. And how about we go with councillor Schattenberg and seconded by councillor Accioni? Sure.
And make a motion to Woodstock City Council add the name Boden to the list of possible street names under the local history category.
Thank you. Discussion? Councillor Schattenberg?
You'll probably notice that if you look at the full agenda online for the city of Woodstock, that the correspondence from Barbara Barnes certainly does appear there where she tells a bit of a story of her of her family and and the name Boden was on the previous list. I've actually got the list that, of course, we had modified it in the summertime or early in the fall. But the the last time, the the original old list, which was several pages long, appeared was February sixth on our on our agenda. And so it's been obviously modified since then, but the name Boden was on that original list and and it fallen off it for for undue unknown reason. But he was a city gardener for many years and planted flower beds from one end of the city to the other. And he grew all the flowers for the for the beds and the greenhouses. And he grew all the flowers for the for the beds in the greenhouses on Ann Street. So it's quite a long illustrious history for the city of Woodstock, but he was also served in both wars. And in the Second World War, he volunteered and also became a male nurse at the military hospital here in Woodstock where sick prisoners of war were being held. So he's got many, many connections to Woodstock beyond being a a connection to the parks and gardens in the city of Woodstock. So for Barbara Barnes, we certainly thank her for sending along the correspondence to us to to make sure the name Boden, B A W D E N is returned to the list of a street name.
Thank you. Counselor Talbot?
Thank you, worship. I just want to say Barb Barnes was my parents' neighbor for many, many years and I know the family and went to school with one of the children, but I think I was on council when Barb approached me the first time to have her father's name put on the list. So I'm happy to say Barb is, I believe, ninety ninety one. And she's sharp enough to be watching council and watching the names as they came and and went and that realized that her father's name had been taken off. So one of her wishes is that she hopes to actually get to see a street name named after her father while she's still here. So I I think she's in pretty good shape. We have a little bit of time, but we do have lots of streets that we will be naming in the future. So maybe we can push this one a bit forward.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries unanimous. And then we have the request for carryovers from the library moved by councillor Tate, seconded by councillor Lauder.
I'll move the motion that the Woodstock City Council authorized Woodstock Public Library Board to carry over the unused allotted twenty twenty capital funds to twenty twenty one for the following projects. Library building feasibility study project a hundred thousand, library flooring, children's area twenty seven thousand. Library flooring lobby area ten thousand, teen space project fifty thousand. And further that city council authorized the Woodstock Public Library Board to move funds from the twenty twenty year end surplus into the library's reservation.
Thank you. Discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries unanimous. And then next we have the correspondence regarding the changes to the Conservation Authority Act. Counselor Schattenberg?
Yeah, thanks a lot to Mr. Trevor Virch, our worship mayor. I am going to read the the full as it was presented on the agenda, the resolution as presented from South Frontenac, that was where the correspondence came from the township of South Frontenac. Schedule six bill two twenty nine changes to the Conservation Authorities Act. I read the entire motion under under the understanding, of course, and I don't do do a big preamble here, under this understanding, of course, that the provincial budget has since been said since been passed, but wanted to sort of open up this for somewhat of a discussion anyway. So anyway, here goes. Whereas the province has introduced bill two twenty nine, protect, support and recover from COVID nineteen act schedule six Conservation Authorities Act. And whereas municipalities believe that the appointment of municipal representatives on the C A board should be a municipal decision and the chair and vice chair of the C A boards should be duly elected. And whereas changes to the legislation will create more red tape and costs for the conservation authorities and their municipal partners that potentially result in delays in the development approval process. And whereas municipalities require a long transition time to put in place agreements with conservation authorities for non-mandatory programs. And whereas municipalities in our three watersheds, that's for South Frontenac, we have the one watershed, the Upper Thames River Conservation Authority here, of course. Value and rely on the natural habitats and water resources within our jurisdiction for the economic health and well-being of residents and our communities. And whereas we rely on the watershed expertise provided by the local conservation authorities to protect residents, property and natural resources on a watershed basis by regulating development, undertaking watershed scale studies and planning and engagement and reviews of applications submitted under the Planning Act. Therefore, be resolved that the province of Ontario delay enactment of clauses affecting municipal concerns and further that the province of Ontario provides a longer transition period than December, up to December twenty twenty two for non-mandatory programs to enable coordination of C A municipal budget processes. And further that the province respects the current Conservation Authority and municipal relationships. And further that the province of Ontario work with Conservation Authorities to address concerns by repealing and remending changes to the Conservation Authorities Act and the Planning Act. And further that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to the Honorable Doug Ford, Premier of Ontario, the Honorable Rod Phillips, Minister of Finance for Ontario, the Honorable Jeff Urick, Minister of the Environment and Honorable Ernie Hardiman, Oxford M P P and Oxford and and the Upper Thames River Conservation Authority and the Association of Municipalities of Ontario.
Thank you. And a seconder? Counselor Lauder. Discussion?
Okay.
Counselor Schattenberg?
And as I stated at the at the beginning, your worship, if I can make a comment on this whole scenario is is as far as city council goes, the city was like I was appointed not only if in the Woodstock City Council, but obviously the county of Oxford, they're the ones who eventually approved the list of representatives to the Upper Thames River Conservation Authority to to sit on the the board of directors. There are not necessarily discussions or debates on what are the core projects of the Upper Thames River Conservation Authority or any of the conservation authorities of which are thirty six in the province of Ontario. But I think the idea is to is to create the opportunity that the conservation authorities still have a true say in the planning matters happening throughout the throughout this watershed, for a particular watershed. There are, for example, there's a place called the, I think it's Duffins Creek near Pickering, where there where this province of Ontario went ahead and and gave a proposal and approval, that's where they call it ministers zoning exemption, basically, to to go ahead and build a warehouse, for example, on fifty seven acres of of what's deemed to be provincially important watershed area or or wetland or or flip plane area. And they went ahead and and promoted it or or passed it along anyway. And then therefore that the local Conservation Authority was not given the opportunity to go to the Alpat, the tribunal, this horse in a way to them, we we don't want this. So the province of Ontario kind of, and it's happened in Oxford County in the past and certainly nearby Stratford as well quite recently, too. For the province of Ontario is try to put together something to to pass a a planning change without allowing the the watershed area or the or the Conservation Authority to say no.
Thank you. Further discussion. Counselor Fraser?
Thank you, worship. And unfortunately, I won't support this motion. I'd I'd rather see our staff, there was a report on this. There's a lot of intricacies to this, and I'd just like to see have some more detail from our staff on the effects that will be caused upon us here. I understand where it's coming from, but that's my viewpoint.
Thank you. Counselor Lauder?
Thank you. I did support the second this motion and order that our representative councillor Schattenberg could put this on for discussion, but at this time, I'm not supporting it. Because I think that it's an issue for the province to deal with. And so I I will not be supporting this.
Thank you. And councillor Atchioni?
Thank you, worship. I too really echo what councillor Fraser had mentioned. I'd be more inclined to let our city staff take a report. So in that case, unfortunately, I will not support this either. But I am interested to learn more from city staff on how this could affect relationships and everything else, as we do have such a good working relationship. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Tate?
I'm just gonna, just a short comment through the chair. I also won't be supporting it. The province has already passed it through first reading, so to get a a report from our staff would almost, it would be be difficult because it's already passed first reading. That's all I'm going to comment on.
Thank you. Further discussion? Okay, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? And opposed? And motion is defeated. And so we can move on with another motion on the same one there. Counselor Tate?
I'll make a motion to receive. Sorry, receive his information.
Thank you. And a seconder councillor Talbot. Discussion? And I I think we already heard the reason why councillor Tate chose that over the the staff report, just timing and if this had been maybe a little sooner, we might have had a bit more time. Counselor Schattenberg?
Yeah, through your mayor, I guess the comment I can make at the this point in time is to sort of say that our environment advisory committee, for example, meets next Tuesday on the fourteenth, and we were certainly going to make some sort of a comment or advisement to that we can either make to council or or specifically to to staff and and of course, keeping in mind too, the the planning office for this for the county for the city of Woodstock really is the Oxford County, too, to be able to look at some of the framework for for timing and whether or not there's ever any delays in the processes of any kind of a a planning proposal that comes to a county councillor or city councillor.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? And opposed? And carries. Thank you. And our next one is the service delivery review, part two, or newly reinvigorated from the Oxford County Council regarding the area municipal councils. And looking for a motion on that one. Councillor Fraser?
Thank you, worship. The Woodstock City Council signed a committee of council producing the meeting to facilitate a consultation workshop with respect to the service delivery review of Oxford County municipalities. And that further that this committee be comprised of councillor Lauder, councillor Tate and and myself, councillor Fraser.
Thank you. And a seconder? And we'll go with councillor Atchioni. Discussion? And seeing none, you've heard the motion, I guess. Well, one thing I'll say before we vote, everyone's fine with having a little more work and reporting back to us. I I see smiles. All right. You've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries unanimous. And next up, we have the B I A carryover request. Councillor Fraser?
Thank you, worship. That Woodstock City Council authorized the downtown Woodstock B I A Board of Management to carry over the twenty twenty year end surplus from the following accounts into the board's reserve accounts, advertising and marketing, downtown beautification, publicity and public relations.
Thank you. And a seconder councillor Atchioni. Discussion? Counselor Fraser?
Thank you, worship. Just speaking on behalf of the B I A Board, which I am appointed to. As everybody's aware, twenty twenty has been something else this year. Certainly, it's prohibited a lot of things, but there will be some surplus in the in the twenty twenty budget. I think it's prudent to allow some of that carryover to go into those three areas for the future. It, you know, certainly they're making every effort in twenty twenty one to do a more publicity and public relations as it's allowed and advertising and marketing. And of course, it's always nice to have some extra funds for beautification in the downtown.
Thank you. Further discussion? Counselor Schattenberg?
Yeah, thanks, your worship. I guess the comment I'd like to make is I'd like to sort of compliment everyone involved with the B I A Board, including Ron Fraser and and those who are running things because of all the the terrific improvements to the museum square and what's been done through City Hall itself and through Bride Jansen and special events and on down the entire list. Maybe Ron can give us some of the some of the ideas to and promote that because the the downtown is certainly looking sharp this Christmas season. And of course, there's the the sleigh rides and everything else still going on.
Thank you. And we might have another item a little later on the agenda that'll help invigorate some of the downtown merchants as well. You've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries unanimous. And now we're on to the purchasing bylaw revisions. We'll go councillor Tate and seconded by councillor Lauder.
Moved by myself that Woodstock City Council approves the recommended changes to municipal code, chapter three, seven, six, procurement of goods and services, and that the necessary bylaw be read.
Thank you. And discussion? Councillor Fraser?
Sorry, worship. I thought you were looking for a second or I guess it's already seconded.
Yep, we had councillor Lauder on that one. And any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? And carries unanimous. And then we have other items to carry over at year end. We'll go with councillor Atchioni and seconded by councillor Talbot.
Move by myself, the Woodstock City Council received a statement of revenue and expenditure in the statement of capital expenditures for the period ending November twenty twenty.
Go back one.
I'm sorry, I just realized that.
Hey, I jumped ahead earlier. Everyone's entitled to do it once in a meeting. There we go.
Though, my apologies, the Woodstock City Council approves the request to carry funds over the year end as listed in the report for various capital and revenue fund projects. And further that these funds be recognized as a prior year commitment or as a reserve contribution as appropriate.
Thank you. Discussion? Counselor Schattenberg?
Yeah, through the mayor to, I guess, the engineering, the department, I'm not sure if the Taylor Crink laws on board here, but one item I did notice was they replace a plow truck for two hundred and forty two thousand was the pushback and and Taylor and I had a phone conversation earlier this week where we started talking about time spans, COVID's one issue. But there were certainly other issues too with ordering larger pieces of equipment. And maybe Taylor can give an explanation to everybody about sort of how that how that system works time wise.
All right, sounds good. Through the mayor. The fleet used in the public works department is quite specialized. So a typical year, it often takes about nine months from the time of purchase to to when we actually receive the fleet for operations. We've been notified by our manufacturers that this being a special year, we can expect delays in those kind of purchases. I guess the main delay comes from the the builder that actually makes the specialized components for our fleet. And they've told us they won't be accepting any new orders essentially until October. And once they receive the order, it takes about four months from there before we actually see the end product. So at this point, anything gets purchased now, it's about a year away before we might even see it.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries unanimous. And now the statement of revenue and expenditures and capital, we'll go with councillor Atchioni. And it'll be seconded by councillor Talbot.
Let me read this again. The Woodstock City, or sorry, approved by myself, the Woodstock City Council received the statement of revenue and expenditure and the statement of capital expenditures for the period ending November thirtieth, twenty twenty is information. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion? And seeing none, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries unanimous. And next up, we have the capital budget approval. And we have quite a few different motions here. So with councils' pleasure, we could kind of start in order with some of these changes and additions. And so looking for a mover on the first one. Mover in a second or so, we'll go move by councillor Lauder and seconded by councillor Fraser.
Thank you. I'll move that Woodstock City Council approved the addition of ten thousand dollars for window coverings for the city hall to be financed from the reserve from capital projects and that fifteen thousand dollars be added to the twenty twenty one capital budget for the cleanup of the former Capitol Theater to be financed from the reserve for capital projects.
Thank you. Discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries unanimous. And then the next one will go with councillor Tate and a seconder of councillor Schattenberg. Thank you.
I'll move that traffic signals, that the total cost of project T R F zero 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 three, new traffic signals, Juliana and Montclair be increased from a hundred and forty nine five and the developers' contributions of a hundred and twelve five be included as other funds.
Thank you. Discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries unanimous. And then the next one will go with a mover councillor Tate and a second- a mover councillor Tate and a seconder councillor Talbot.
I'll move municipal buildings, that the financing for project building 00025 five way group replacement be changed from ICIP COVID stream to the reserve for capital projects. But the total cost of project building 00033 Southgate Center renovation addition be increased from 5.3 million to 6.3 million at the Southgate Center contribution of 1 million be included as other funds.
Thank you. Discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries unanimous. And who wants to get rid of a front end loader? We'll go with councillor Acioli and a seconder of councillor Lauder.
Move by myself that the project FIR 00028, front end loader attachment station one be removed from the 2021 capital budget.
Thank you. Discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries. And next up, we have parks. And we'll go with councillor Talbot and seconded by councillor Schattenberg.
Thank you, worship. I'll move that the financing for project PKS 0001 park drives and parking areas be changed from 80,000 capital out of revenue to 40,000 capital out of revenue and 40,000 ICIP COVID stream to finance the accessible walkway in William Gray Park. And also that the financing for project PKS 00078 Paddock Sliver Trail Boardwalk be changed from development charges recreation to ICIP COVID stream.
Thank you. Discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries unanimous. And next up, we'll go with councillor Fraser.
Thank you, worship. That Woodstock City Council approved the addition of $125,000 for the completion of a downtown streetscape master plan to be financed with 40,000 from the reserve for capital projects and 85,000 from the downtown redevelopment reserve fund.
Thank you. And a seconder councillor Acioli discussion? Councillor Fraser?
Thank you, worship. Since I brought this up, we have this really good downtown redevelopment plan completed by the consultants. Or I think there's still a bit more to do, but they have a lot of recommendations in there. And certainly one of them is for the streetscape master plan. So we have to start someplace and it takes time. So if we put this into the capital budget, certainly the amount of money would, from I understand from staff, would allow for consultant to be in, involved, take it into consideration, a survey and other aspects of that. So it's a start on some actions with our downtown redevelopment plan.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries unanimous. And I'll ask, is there any other motions anyone would like to make? Any additions or deletions, changes? And we'll say going once, going twice. And so the final approval of the capital budget will go councillor Acioli and seconded by councillor Lauder.
Thank you, worship. I move on myself, the Woodstock City Council approved the 2021 to 2025 capital budget as amended and that the director of administrative services be directed to prepare the necessary bylaw for council consideration.
Thank you. Discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries unanimous. And that's it for the capital budget. And for the viewers at home, we'll be getting started on the operating budget in February. Now, next up, we have the investing in Canada infrastructure program. Looking for a mover and a seconder on that one. We'll go move by councillor Tate, seconded by councillor Acioli.
I'll move that city council approve the applications to the ICIP COVID 19 resilience infrastructure stream, local government intake Ontario fund and affirm its intent to proceed with the projects of approved by the provincial and federal governments.
Thank you. Discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries unanimous. And next up, we have the downtown parking extension. We'll go move by councillor Fraser, seconded by councillor Lauder.
Thank you, worship. Woodstock City Council authorized the increase of on-street and short-term municipal parking lots from two hours to three hours until June 4th, 2021.
Thank you. Discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. Oh, was that for voting or for discussion councillor Fraser? For voting? Okay.
This are discussions, your worship.
Discussion, go ahead, sir.
I think because of the continuation of the pandemic, we've proved that the parking to three hours till January. It's only prudent that the way things are going to extend us to help bolster the BIA.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries unanimous. And means we'll be down a little bit of revenue in our ticketing category. But, and a friendly reminder, it's after December 1st, so make sure you don't park on street. And if you're in a municipal lot, make sure you're on the right side because you don't want to pay those fines either. Next up, we have the Terry Fox agreement. And we'll go councillor Schattenberg and seconded by councillor Acioli.
Yeah, the Woodstock City Council direct staff to notify the Thames Valley District School Board and Woodstock Legion Athletic Club that the city is giving the 180 day notice to terminate the agreement regarding the Terry Fox Memorial Track.
Thank you. Discussion councillor Schattenberg?
Yeah, through the mayor to, to our Parks and Recreation Director, Brian Connors. First of all, the Terry Fox Memorial Track, of course, is that College Avenue Secondary School, but maybe give us a bit of a brief history story on, on, on the track and the work that was done there many years ago and, and what continues to be an interesting scenario between sort of managing the track and the park there and the city's responsibilities in the school board.
Your worship, through the councillor's question. In 2007, the city entered an agreement with the Thames Valley District School Board and the Legion, the Woodstock Legion Athletic Club. The city was maintaining the grounds, the football field. And the school board was booking it out. We were doing that and we actually made the adjustment to the agreement in 2017 in order to make sure that we weren't kind of saddled with a lot of the larger capital expenses. So we made that adjustment. And we figure that now that we've built a, a multi-use field that will be able to house football as, as well as other sports that we should take the operating costs that are used for the school field and move that to the, to the field that's going to have the municipal use to it.
Thank you. Further discussion? And councillor Schattenberg?
Yeah, through to Brian Connors Omar Tommy, just as for a full clarification, I mean, Jack Ray, for example, is on our Recreation Advisory Committee from the Woodstock Legion Athletic Club. So this isn't going to be a, be a surprise to them. And, and they'll probably be able to continue to use that to facility again through bookings through College Avenue Secondary School.
Your worship, through the councillor's question, I have spoken to this individual as the head coach for the Woodstock Legion Athletic Club. So he understands what's happening. In the meantime, there, the province passed the Community Use of Schools Act. And that should allow community groups to book school property during non-school hours. So that is now something that is a provincial statute.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries unanimous. And next up, we have the proposed sale of city industrial land. And we'll go with councillor Lauder, seconded by councillor Acioli.
Thank you. I'll move that Woodstock City Council authorized the mayor and clerk to sign an agreement of purchase and sale with Delage Properties Limited and that the necessary bylaw be read and further that Delage Properties Limited be authorized to act as as the city's agent for the purpose of the zone change on this proper subject property.
Thank you. Discussion? Councillor Lauder?
I wonder if Mr Magier would like to speak to this. It's another sale of land. And here we are in December and we've done really well this, this year in land sales. Their department has worked very hard. So if he could just maybe let the public know where this would be.
And thank you, your worship. This is a small sale at the end of Nellis Street. So it's about 0.8 acres. It's an individual we've dealt with before who's had some success. He built a building originally and then was able to sell it. What he's proposing to do is build a building that has two units, one for his own use and one for lease. And you're absolutely correct. We've been on quite a tear in terms of selling industrial land and in getting to the point where there's very little left in terms of service industrial land for us to sell. So we have high hopes next year when our LA farm comes to market. We already have a lot of interest in it. So hopefully we'll be able to keep, keep the ball rolling in terms of sales well into next year.
Thank you. Further discussion councillor Acioli?
Thank you, your worship. Just through to Mr Magier and all your staff, just want to commend yous. It's been a really challenging year with COVID and everything else, but yet there's been no slowdown whatsoever. So just hats off and thank you for pushing as much as we can. And we'll try to get you as more land as we can to sell. So thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries unanimous. And next up is the council schedule for next year. And we'll go councillor Tate and seconded by councillor Schattenberg.
Make motion that Woodstock City Council meeting dates for the months of July, August and December 2021 and January 2022 is established as Thursday, July 15th, 2021. Thursday, August 12th, 2021. Thursday, December 9th, 2021 and Thursday, January 13th, 2022.
Thank you. Discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries unanimous. And next up is the safety standards certificate requirements for the taxi licensing. And we'll go councillor Talbot and a seconder will be councillor Acioli.
Thank you, worship. I'll move that Woodstock City Council approve the proposed changes to municipal code, chapter 643 Taxi Limousine and that the necessary bylaw be prepared.
Thank you. Discussion? Councillor Lauder?
Thank you. Could we have our clerk, city clerk, Amy Hamphries? Just give a little brief outline of what this change is. I know it's, it's quite small, but I think it's certainly not a reasonable request. So if she could just mention what this is about. Thank you.
Certainly. Thank you, your worship, through to councillor Lauder. So council received some correspondence back at the November 5th council meeting from Kendall Cab. And they requested that the requirement for a safety certificate be removed when licensing brand new taxi vehicles. So upon reviewing the requests, we determined that this would be a consistent practice with obtaining a license plate from Service Ontario. But it's also consistent with some neighboring municipality bylaws. Some require a safety certificate while others don't. It's sort of about a 50/50. So as such, we felt that the request wouldn't sacrifice the safety requirements of the taxi licensing program. And we do support the request to remove the requirement for a safety, but only specifically for brand new vehicles that have less than 500 kilometers. So if council approves this, then we would bring an amending bylaw to the next council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries. And next we have the minor variance for 499 Crestwood Court. And looking for a mover and a seconder? We'll go councillor Lauder and a seconder councillor Fraser.
I'll move that Woodstock City Council supports the committee of adjustments decision of November 16th, 2022 to not approve minor variance application MV 26-20. And further that city council authorized the required funding to defend the committee's decision at the local planning appeal tribunal hearing.
Thank you. Discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries. And then we have our confirming bylaw. And we'll go councillor Tate and a seconder councillor Acioli.
Woodstock City Council refer the confirming bylaw to the bylaw section of the agenda.
Thank you. Discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries unanimous. And then we have our report on 381 to 385 Dundas Street. Councillor Lauder and a seconder councillor Talbot.
Thank you. I'll move that Woodstock City Council authorized the sale of 381 to 385 Dundas Street to the county of Oxford and the necessary bylaw be prepared.
Thank you. Discussion councillor Talbot?
Thank you, your worship. Maybe Mr Curry would like to speak to this just so, because I think when people see the two addresses, they think it's all the space there. But the part where the part wall was, which was the oldest furniture store beside habitual chocolate has been encumbered by the, the county through money that was given to the purchaser. So this only makes sense that the county take all the lands and hopefully they'll be able to find a developer to come in and make some housing. But maybe Mr Curry could comment?
Your worship, through to council. Councillor Talbot has done a very good job of summarizing this particular issue. This property has been now on three consecutive council agendas. At the last council meeting, council approved the exercising of our right of repurchase of the property at 90% of, of what we sold it to the current ownership for. So we are in the process of completing that buyback. Our city solicitor is in touch and is working through that. But we want to, we want to act quickly on, on this property. And that's why this is before council on this agenda. As councillor Talbot indicated, there are two issues that are frustrating. What we, what we would normally do is remarket for the property and put out a request for proposals. But the two issues that are frustrating us moving forward in that is the fact that there is a financial encumbrance by the county on the properties from the previous affordable housing project that was planned. And secondly, this is just a portion of the overall property that you see on the street. The Capitol Theater represents roughly two thirds of what has been demolished. The former Stubby's Furniture Store, I believe, which was the last use in that building, is partially demolished. It will remain in the ownership of the, 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 the current proponents. The city does not have a right of buyback for that property. And so we think the best course of action here is to, is to resell the property for what the city originally sold it for four years ago for the $100,000 to the county. And let the county work to consolidate these two properties into one and hopefully move forward with what was originally planned as an affordable housing project.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing, oh councillor Acioli?
Yeah, thank you, worship. Through to
Yeah, thank you, worship. Through to Mr Currie, just for confirmation, then the plan is for the county to ask for, or put it up for sale for development, then. Correct? Just as a bigger parcel of land to be able to do more with it.
Your worship through to councillor Acioli. That would be what we would believe the county would do. The county has some work first in, in putting the parcel together and, and being able to flip clear title to any proposed purchaser and developer. I'm not sure what process the county would, would use in, in selecting who to, to to build an affordable housing project. That would be their call if the city did in fact sell it to them. Okay, we are, we're, we're not proposing any of our typical covenants in the sale because it is from city to county. Normally, we would have a right of buyback. Normally, we would include performance conditions that require building permits being obtained by a certain date and construction starting by a certain date. We're not proposing any of that in the transfer to the county. The county would then be responsible to, to to put any of those conditions on their sale to whoever is the final developer.
Okay. And in relation to that, then who is going to be taking care of the, the location? I know we've got funds set aside to kind of clean up the one section, I believe. But where the, the basement is, I believe, is the partial that they owned. Are they going to be doing something with it in the meantime, just to kind of clean up that whole spot if it's gonna sit vacant for another year or something like that?
Your worship through to councillor Acioli, the partially demolished building unfortunately is the one that is in the ownership that we cannot, we, we, we cannot execute a buyback for. And so our hope is that the county would be able to, to work a deal with the owner in order to acquire that so they can create a larger parcel. It's all in the timing. Council approved funds in the, in the capital budget a few reports earlier for, for some cleanup. And it all comes down to the timing of when the transfer would occur. You know, I think preferably what we would do, if the city is going to be in ownership of the Capitol Theatre for a period of time, would be to take the, the hoarding that's on the front, which is actually quite attractive now because it's been, been painted by a local volunteer artist and to rotate that hoarding so that we're actually cordoning off and blocking off the, the dangerous portion, which is the the partially demolished building and cleaning grade the, the balance of the land which it sat for years and was used as parking before, before this, this development proposal came forward. So if there is going to be a lag in time, I think that's what we would like to see happen so that it doesn't encumber the sidewalk. It doesn't, it isn't as, as much of a, a visual issue in the downtown as it is now.
And I'm going to assume then the county would work with us and allow us to kind of clean that up accordingly and, and everything else if this is successful.
Your worship through councillor Acioli, I mean, our, in, in, in the, in the best scenario, we would flip it to the county and we would ask the county to clean it up. But it, it's all in the timing and we have to be respectful of the downtown and we have to be respectful of the property owners who have put up with this situation for a long time. And so if there is a gap in that time, I think we have to be, we have to take responsibility and, and do something to help improve the situation.
Certainly couldn't agree more. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion. Councillor Lauder.
Thank you. Through to Mr Currie. The hoarding on the front and it's lovely what they've done, but I noticed that somebody, someone has pushed some of it in. So it's, there's, it's not propped up as well. So I wonder if we would be doing something on that, just even in the meantime, just to make sure that they don't push it right over whoever has done that. So, or maybe it's just the wind that it did done.
Okay, your worship through to councillor Lauder. I wasn't aware of that and I believe our public works is on the meeting and so we will, we will send some staff to, to prop that back up and, and secure it.
Thank you. Further discussion. Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries unanimous. Next up, we have the fire arbitration settlement. Looking for a mover and a seconder. We'll go move by councillor Tate, seconded by councillor Acioli.
I'll make the motion that Woodstock City Council receive the report regarding fire arbitration settlement as information.
Thank you. Discussion. We have our director of HR here. If anyone would like to hear any clarification regarding this complex matter. Okay, seeing none. You've heard the motion. All in favor? And that's the second. I had a little bit of a delay on my screen. All in favor and then opposed. And I'm still not sure if my delays. It looked unanimous. Okay, very good. Carries. Next item is the human resources policy. Again, looking for a mover and a seconder. So we'll go move by councillor Talbot and seconded by councillor Fraser.
Thank you, worship. I'll move that Woodstock City Council repeal and replace council policy HR 003 allowance for use of personal vehicle and HR 010 expense allowance, conferences, conventions, seminars, training courses and workshops effective January 1st, 2021. And further, that city council repeal council policy F 004 Ravenhurst Fire College and Government subsidized courses and A 004 expense allowance conferences, conventions, seminars, training courses and workshops support person.
Thank you. Discussion. Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And I think we got it opposed. I'm not sure why I'm freezing up so much. I normally don't freeze up. Oh, we have someone I missed. Was there discussion? Councillor Acioli, go ahead. Sorry.
Thank you, worship. This was actually just to, through the director of HR, just if you wouldn't mind speaking to this, this motion? And tell the public what this is all about.
Yes, thank you. Through your, your worship to the councillor's question. What we have here is we have updated the corporate policies with respect to mileage that's allowed for employees when they're driving on city business. And the second policy is actually dealing with the reimbursement for employees who go away to conferences or seminars, which probably not going to be a lot of that in the next little while. But, and what this is, this was a very old policy. And for some reason, it was linked to the general cost of living index, which didn't always really match what was the true cost of what we should be reimbursing. That's why we've linked it to the Canada Revenue Agency's recommended costs and we are matching the mileage for what they are recommending exactly. But with respect to the meal allowance, what we felt was a little fairer is we're going for 85% of what they're recommending, which brings it a little more in line. But for the future, it's something I think we can rely on a little bit more that is going to be accurate in terms of reflecting the true cost.
Thank you. Further discussion. I don't see any. You've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries unanimous. Next up is a very, very expensive piece of fire equipment. We'll go councillor Acioli and a seconder councillor Lauder. Go ahead.
Move by myself, the Woodstock City Council pre-approved the standard reserve contribution of 325,000 to the provision for fire equipment reserves, forming part of the 2021 operating budget submission. And further, that city council approved the addition of 350,000 from provision for fire equipment reserves. And further, that city council approved the purchase from commercial emergency equipment at a proposed project price of 1,414,509 plus HST for project 1046.
Thank you. Discussion. And we'll go councillor Acioli.
Yes, I just see our fire chief is online. If he doesn't mind speaking to this, I would appreciate it. Absolutely. Your worship through to the councillor. So this project again was the, an initial capital approval for 2020. And at the time that we brought it forward, it was for the intended replacement of our current 75 foot ladder apparatus, which would have been brought more in line with the proposed request of funds that we had put in for at that time. Over the course of this year, as we're dealing with everything else, the RFP, while we are in the process of developing it, things slowed down a titch. We, we had a, a rather bit of a failure with one of our other apparatus, our platform truck that has basically made it that we can't put people on it. It operates now effectively as a water boom. Now, this apparatus is our 100 foot platform. And it was slated for a later time for a replacement as part of our budgetary planning of what we were looking at doing. The intent was to maintain it as a reserve truck and replace the 75 foot. When we came through with the, noticed that the issue and the outstanding issue to repair it being kind of time and cost prohibitive, we did a review of what type of apparatus we would replace and what we could potentially have in line to, I guess, blend what we were originally looking at and something that would effectively not be a direct replacement to our platform, but allow us to still enhance some of the options and availability that that platform brings to us. So we issued, we modified the RFP out to include these enhancements for a truck that we needed and would be putting us in line for our future growth as the department continues to grow and move forward on. With the, the, the commercial print, or sorry, commercial print, commercial truck was the successful and sole bidder for this apparatus that was submitted. We had an inkling that it would be over what our initial requests were due to the nature of us going from a 75 foot to a 100 foot and some changes and some unique situations there. However, with the, the outlook and the planning that we've had for our reserve contributions to our apparatus, by moving forward with this, if we stick with our standard reserve contribution, it doesn't require any additional, real additional funds, I guess, to be added to the planning. It kind of falls in line with a bit of the planning. We just more or less hold off, you know, a, a bit longer, a, a year over on it. So the funds are still there. We're just asking for the approval for a bit earlier on it so that we can move on this sooner rather than waiting for March for us to be able to start and wait for an operating budget approval to have that reserved contribution.
Councillor Acioli.
If I can just continue on, I just want to make sure through the chief, of course, that with our new apartment buildings and everything else coming in line here in the city, that obviously this 100 foot truck is going to be more suitable as well for all the new buildings and everything else. So we'll be kind of covered what, what's required. Your worship through to councillor Acioli. One of the, the great misconceptions with, with fire apparatus unfortunately is that our ladders and our aerials, we have to be able to reach all the floors of every building. That's something we do want to debunk. When we look at what the, the reach and the depth and such like that that we need for our aerial apparatus, that comes in line with our standard and general operations that we have. All of our high-rise buildings that are here and that are constructed underneath of the Ontario Building Code have safety features built into them so that they're designed to have safety, still provide a safe environment outside the reach of any apparatus. I've yet to see a fire apparatus that from the ground is going to hit the 100 plus stories that Toronto carries in that area there. So the apparatus itself is in line with what the operational requirements we had had established as a fire department a number of years ago. When they moved towards the 100 foot platform for reach and for access and that, it's our opportunity now to have a blend of still maintaining the reach that we're losing with the 100 foot platform. We do lose the platform capability, but we retain the, the tip weight. So the ability that in a rescue mode, we can still have three people at the end of a ladder, two firefighters and a, and an individual that we're bringing down. What the plan with this is, is that when the time comes for us to replace the 75 foot ladder that we were intending to replace now, we can do an operational review of the city as to what the specific needs are. And if a platform is a requirement still at that point, we would maintain our ongoing budgetary planning still and we can go that route at that time. So we, we're bringing this back in line to maintain that we still have a 75 foot and 100 foot accesses. Thank you. Thanks for that explanation.
Thank you. Further discussion. All right. You've heard the motion. All those in favor? And I've got a little bit of a delay. That's everybody, right? So approved unanimous. And next up is our last report. We have the EPS recycling program. And we'll go with councillor Schattenberg and a seconder will be councillor Acioli.
Yeah, the Woodstock City Council approved the continuation of the EPS recycling program administered by a second wind recycling.
Thank you. Discussion. Councillor Schattenberg.
And we're going to have a comment here from our city engineer Harold DeHaun on, on this program and, and the success of it's been so far. And then the importance of continuing this for the city of Woodstock.
I think we'll hear from our director of public works, Taylor Kinkla. There we go.
No problem. And thanks. Through the mayor, just like as a brief recap, second wind recycling approached us early last year regarding this pilot program that was being supported by the Canadian Improvement Fund. Last November, we received approval from council to do a one-year pilot, at which point we're able to reach the Christmas rush for recycling EPS. The program has one run quite effectively out of our Viro Depot location. Even though it was shut down for a three-month period during the closures that we were having, it still was able to divert 352 meters from the, our landfill. So at approximately cost of $3,100. And this is quite comparable to the cost for a curbside pickup. So I'd say it's a successful program.
Thank you. Further discussion. Seeing none, you've heard the, oh, was that for the vote or more discussion? Go ahead, councillor.
No, no, for the vote. That's fine.
All right, for the vote. Okay. Again, I've got just a little bit of a delay. I normally don't have, but you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries unanimous. So next up, we have the bylaws and they'll be moved by councillor Acioli and seconded by councillor Talbot. Thank you.
Thank you, your worship. Move by myself at 9421-20, a bylaw to re-appeal and replace the city of Woodstock Municipal Code Chapter 376 procurement of goods and services. Number 9422-20, a bylaw to amend zoning bylaw, number 8626-10 is amended that an 820-10, 850 Parkinson Road. Also 9423-20, a bylaw to provide for the sale of certain lands owned by the corporation of the city of Woodstock to Delage Properties Limited. And finally, 9424-20, a bylaw to adopt and confirm all actions and proceedings of the council of the corporation of the city of Woodstock during the period December 13, 2019 to December 10, 2020.
Thank you. You've heard the motion. Any discussion? All those in favor? And carries unanimous. Councillor Acioli.
Right. Thank you. Move by myself, the, that the following bylaws be given a third and final reading, 9421-20 to 9424-20.
Thank you. And that was, and seconded again by councillor Talbot. You've heard the motion. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? And carries unanimous. And let's see, we'll begin with And carries unanimous and let's see, we'll begin with. Let's go councillor Talbot.
Thank you worship. As everybody is aware, we've had good news in Canada this week with. Authorizing the use of the Pfizer vaccine. Good news for the last, what we've been dealing with the last ten months, but it doesn't mean that we can stop. Washing our hands and wearing masks and being careful and it's still very much important as the. Roll out of the vaccine is going to be. Not slow, but it's going to be measured and as quantities allow and it will go to those that need it the most first. Anyways, I'm saying that that hopefully will make the beginning of or at least thinking about twenty twenty one. Have we'll have happier thoughts that we might go be able to go back to a more normal life one that we're used to. I imagine that there'll still be some restrictions, but hopefully it will be better. So in saying that. This is our last meeting before the holidays. I just want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas. And hoping that twenty twenty one brings everybody happiness and health. Thank you.
Thank you. And then we'll go councillor Schattenberg.
Thanks your worship. I guess first of all, I wish everyone a safe and happy holiday season and just a reminder, we're in a lot of places. Looking for donations this time of year, of course, the non perishable food items. Here's another one to keep in mind is the. What the libraries are annual food for fines program continues until December the twelfth, so today's December the tenth, get your late. Items back to the library, you you be forgiven for the fines if you bring in a non perishable food items like. Cans of food or whatever for the Salvation Army food drive, so that continues on until December the twelfth and again, happy holidays to everybody. In the Woodstock area.
Thank you councillor Fraser.
Thank you worship and. Yeah, what do we got? Fourteen days left before Christmas roughly, fourteen day shopping days possibly. And speaking of shopping, if we can, let's support our local people as best we can. I know we can't, some people think you can't find everything you need locally, but you can find a lot of things locally. And certainly just a bit of a reminder that the BIA has carriage rides going on on Friday and Saturday. Friday evenings from five to eight and Saturday from twelve to four, starting of Museum Square. So take advantage of that. I'd also like to comment to our parks department and recreation. Great job with the Christmas lights and the new additions in Museum Square. Accolades for the choices and the setup and looks beautiful there at night. The tour lights is coming, the maps are out. Everybody can get in their car and drive around, which I think is a great idea and I already picked up my maps and. I'll be taking my daughter and I and maybe some of the rest of the family and we'll go for a drive. So other than that, Merry Christmas and hopefully twenty twenty one will be a better year than what we experienced this past one. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Tate.
I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas also and it's been a difficult year for everyone, not. I think we should take into consideration those that are less fortunate than us and as everyone's commented about. Places for donations, but also be very kind to people when you see them too. It has been really difficult. There's people that don't get out, they don't see people and it's been. Even that part has been hard. I think councillor Talbot and I always laugh, we've never been on Facebook or social media. And those people that are on it, use it for a positive, not negative, especially in these times. We don't, I know as politicians, we get attacked, that's fine, but use it as a positive. It's hard enough as it is for everyone and. As councillor Fraser says, please shop downtown and take out food at your restaurants, even if you can't get in, they all really need it. I don't know if anybody's read much, but the restaurants are hit really hard and if you can get takeout. And have a good holiday.
Thank you councillor Lauder.
Thank you, just wishing everyone a Merry Christmas and look forward to twenty twenty one. It's all tied to abide by the restrictions of the health minister and the premier and and. Look forward to with vaccination when it's available so that we can all get our lives back together with our family. And friends and just stay healthy, wear your mask and wash your hands and we will get through this. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Agioni.
Thank you worship. Twenty twenty has certainly been an eye opener for everybody and I hope we can all appreciate and kind of learn what we do have and appreciate. What you what we have. I know for one, coming from a very large family, it's been a very difficult year not seeing and getting together with everyone and. This Christmas holiday, we've kind of decided we're gonna be safe and not all get together again just. For safety reasons, so I am definitely one that I'm looking forward to twenty twenty one. Get back together with family and friends and please ask that everybody be smart. Let's hope we're at the end with a vaccine coming out that the lights around the corner. Our numbers here in Oxford County have actually come down a bit, so which is very encouraging. I'm just fearful now that people are going to be too relaxed over the Christmas holidays, so. Let's, we're almost through it, everybody, let's, but let's hope anyways. I encourage everybody to have very Merry Christmas, be safe, be healthy. Be thankful for what you have and please be generous and like everybody else has mentioned, shop as much as you can downtown. My wife and I are still enjoying going out to eating out safely, of course, as much as we can to try to help. Our restaurant friends and everybody and encourage you to do the same thing. I know things aren't normal, but try to be as normal as you can with your spending so that all our small businesses can survive. So they're going to be there when we need them the most, when we get through this all, so thanks, everybody. Merry Christmas from my family to yours.
Thank you. And for those that are in our community that are counting down. The final days of twenty twenty, remember. It'll be time to calculate your income taxes for the year twenty twenty in the not too distant future. So many of these great community partner organizations that we have, including two that were recognized. By council earlier in today's meeting, of course, any contribution financially. You can get a tax receipt, it'll help you with that tax return. They're also always looking for volunteers that can give of their time and their talent. There is a giving guide that's available through the county website. And don't forget about the locations for the angel trees and opportunities where you can. Give anonymously and help some of the families in our community that. Might not have quite as merry of a Christmas without that added help this year. Of course, it wouldn't be the the last meeting of the year if I wasn't wearing. My favorite Christmas tie, so it's a bah humbug alien with my Santa hat. But city hall remains open, we do have a modified schedule between Christmas and New Year's. But of course, all of the city services will continue and. Remember, we will have some more snowfalls coming and if you're looking to. Get a little extra exercise and wear off any of those special treats that you have over the holidays, maybe consider. Helping shovel in your own neighborhood. And again, there's so many opportunities in the friendly city to make special memories, so. Even even though those memories may be a little different for your friends and family than other in other years. You can still have an opportunity to make the most and brighten someone's day, so with that. I will ask for a motion to adjourn and look forward to seeing everyone in the new year. And we'll go move by councillor Fraser, seconded by councillor Agioni, all those in favor.